Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, December 7, 2020. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 6, 2019, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Troytown News. Second, on December 6, 2019, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December 6, 2019, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. On October 5, 2020, a notice was sent to both the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger that this meeting would be held remotely using communication equipment via Zoom due to COVID-19 restrictions. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching their decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. This meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. For members of the public who are watching the hearing or listening to the hearing, please be advised that when the chairman opens the hearing up for members of the public to ask questions or comment on an application, you will be asked to please raise your hand. You will need audio and video. You will be brought into the meeting. You'll have to give your name, address, and be sworn in. Okay, so once again, that's only when the chairman opens the hearing up for members of the public. For the applicants, we'll bring you in and your professional team when your application has been called. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. Moretti?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell? He's having trouble, so we'll give him a little while. Mr. Orozco has been excused. Mr. Sayah?
Here.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Tropley, you might swear in the professionals, please.
Professionals, please raise your right hand. You swear the testimony you'll give this evening be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self of God.
I do.
I do.
Thank you. The record should reflect that Ms. Beam, Mr. Conliffe, and Mr. Howard have all been sworn for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Pardon me. Approval of minutes?
No minutes this evening. I hope to have some soon.
Okay. Vouchers?
Vouchers this evening.
Correspondence?
I do have correspondence. The first thing I have is a letter from Todd Cohen. He is the attorney for case number BA 1924, Kristoff Roska, who is on tonight's agenda. He asked that this application be carried to the board's meeting of January 25, 2021, with no further notice. He also granted the board an extension of time through and including January 31, 2021.
Okay, what's on the agenda for that night? Do we have, is that pretty booked?
Right now, that is this case and one other case that has been scheduled, one of Mr. Pape's cases.
What was that date again, Eileen?
January 25, 2021.
January 25?
Yes.
I'm gonna read it in just a second here. Okay, that's the one we heard last week, right?
This application that we're carrying?
No.
No, no, the other case is a brand-new case.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Okay. Okay, case number BA 1924, Kristoff Roska?
Yes.
I hope I got it right?
Yep.
This case will be carried to June, January 25, 2021. Expiration date has been granted to January 31, 2021. Anyone in the public, please be advised that this will not require another notice. Okay?
Okay, and the only other thing, I wanted to know if we could check on these dates for next year so I can advertise. And I'm pretty sure we can go back to two meetings a month, our normal schedule. They'll still be Zoom. And the only two dates that are really in question, the first one is October 4, because our regularly scheduled date would be October 11, and that's Columbus Day, which is a holiday. And then December, the first meeting is December 13, the last or the fourth Thursday, Monday of the month, sorry, is December 27, which is in between the holidays, so I don't think anybody wants to be here. I didn't know if you want to add December 6 or December 20 as another meeting date.
The 6 will work for me.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, let's do the 6.
All those dates on that, you know, work for me for sure, so.
Yeah, I agree. I would suggest, though, Eileen, for at least January, maybe even into February, I'd go ahead and do any available Monday night that's available. I'd go ahead and advertise for them, even though we don't have a meeting, because, you know, I know how the schedule is right now.
Yeah, there's probably only one date I can add, or two maybe at the most, because January, we can't have a meeting till after the council re, does their reorg, and then there's a holiday in there. February, you also have a holiday, but there may be one or two other Mondays, so I could advertise for them. If we don't need them, we won't use them.
Okay, I would, just, just say.
Okay, I'll add them then.
Good plan. Good plan.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Ron, I don't know if this is the time to bring it up. I received a letter, and it's from the Environmental Commission, you know, on the rock-solid case. How do we address this?
Well, well, we're not going to address it right now, Mr. Chair. You received it, excuse me, personally?
Well, it was given to me in my package, so, you know.
The rock-solid resolution is not going to be adopted tonight.
Okay.
That I can tell you.
Ron, we can't add, like, conditions from the Environmental Commission that submitted a letter after we acted on the application?
Oh, no, no, no. And I agree with you. The reason why it's not being acted upon tonight is that Ken had asked me to review it, and Ken is, I have not heard from him on that, you know.
Does he not realize that we're meeting every week, though?
I, you know, I thought I made it pretty clear to him. I mean, look, I'm half tempted to just say the heck with it and do it, but he did send me a letter and asked that he have an opportunity to review it. And in all fairness, I just sent it to the amendments that Charlie and I reviewed again today. I sent that to the board today, and he hasn't had the opportunity to review it. But I agree with you, Jen, but Wendell, as Jen said, if the Environmental Commission sends something after the resolution has been drawn and the hearing's over, the nonstarter.
Okay, because they, you know, my, I just had a comment, because they've had this since, I think, way back in February.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Every application that comes in for review is sent out to 15 or 17 people, and the Environmental Commission is one of them. They get all the same links that the professionals get and can review an application anytime they want to look at it. They review them once a month when they have their meeting, and they haven't had every meeting because of COVID. They've also canceled meetings on applicants, and now something was approved, and they didn't get to talk about it with the applicant. It's not our fault, and...
No, because that, I mean, they're an advisory body to this entity.
Exactly.
Who let them know what was going on, like, they don't get a crack at it after the fact.
No.
I agree.
Okay, they're all I wanted to hear.
I mean, for the same token, we haven't had reports from the Farmers Advisory at all this year, because they have not met because of COVID. So, there's nothing I can do.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. It's totally understood. Okay, moving forward, if, there's no other correspondence. We good?
Oh, you're muted.
Sorry, I have nothing else.
Okay, good. Okay, resolutions, we're not, we're not going to do rock-solid, correct?
Right, I feel obligated to give him at least one week, so let's carry, well, you have 6520, Mr. Chair, which, as far as I'm concerned, you can do, but rock-solid, I'm going to request that it be adjourned one week. There's no comment from Mr. Pape, then it'll be amended, but Eileen, we'll have to change the dates on that resolution.
That's no problem, and I did email Mr. Pape today, but he hasn't gotten back to me.
Okay.
We'll give him a week, and other than that, whether we hear or not, we'll adopt it then. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Case number BA 1918 6520 LLC, resolution granting use variance, bulk variance, and preliminary site plan approval. I thought that was final, too.
No, he usually goes for preliminary only.
Okay, preliminary, okay. Eligible voters, Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, Sayah, Cantor, Gonzalez, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Mr. Hughes, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Who was it?
Mertens.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Mertens. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Sayah? Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Okay, next resolution, case number BA 1804, Sean and Christina Conway, bulk variance for a single-family dwelling with septic system. Eligible voters, Hughes, Moretti, Orozco, Cantor, and Nansen. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Hughes. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Cantor. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolutions memorialized.
Okay, Eileen, I'm gonna take a few-second break here. I got Mr. O'Donnell, I'm gonna try to get him on.
Okay, thank you.
Eileen, I, okay, I apologize, everybody. Mr. O'Donnell is excused. He will not be joining us. He can't, he can't, something's wrong with the computer.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Okay, moving, okay, we got another, I didn't know this one was on here. Okay, case number BA 20112, Jose Otoro Zola Hernandez. It's a bulk variance for 15 decorative pillars in the front yard setback. Eligible voters, Mr. Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, O'Donnell, Sayah, Cantor, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second it.
Motion by Mr. Mertens, seconded by Mr. Moretti. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Sayah?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolutions memorialized.
Okay, Charlie, I, real quick, now that that's memorialized, you're gonna help this, that applicant, you know, steer him in the right direction, correct?
Yes, I think he was gonna reach out to Matt, and they were gonna go to the governing body. I think they had 16 to 90 days to petition the governing body, so really, it's up to them, I think, to coordinate with Matt to get, get, get on the next, first available committee meeting in, or council meeting in January, so.
Okay. You good with that? Okay, good, Matt. Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Okay, we already discussed case number BA 1924 is going to be carried to January 25, 2021, with no further notice. Okay, next case on the agenda, case number BA 20-106, Ronco Developers, Inc., bulk variance for construction of single-family dwelling on a undersized lot. Application of Ronco Developers, Inc., as applicant owner seeking a bulk variance approval for construction of new two-story, single-family dwelling on an undeveloped, undersized lot along with service walk, a service walk asphalt drive with concrete driveway apron, public water service connection. The applicant is also proposing a 10-by-10 patio at it, at the eastern rear corner of the dwelling on premises known as Block 35, Lot 1201, Sullivan Boulevard. This application was originally scheduled for October 5, when it was rescheduled to November 9, with no notice, and then November 9, it was rescheduled to December 7, 2020, with no, no notice, with notice. Expiration date, December 19, 2020. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Excuse me, Paul Mirabelli, on behalf of the applicant. Want to proceed, and we want to just confirm that you have jurisdiction?
That's correct, Paul, yes. Jurisdiction has been taken, notice is appropriate. How many witnesses, Paul, do you have this evening?
One expert, and also the applicant is here, if it's necessary for him to testify, that's all.
And who was your expert, please?
Mark Lieber. He's gonna testify as an engineer and a planner.
Is he on?
He should be.
Eileen, Mark Lie, is Mark Lieber's on?
Yes, we're gonna put him into the meeting, one second.
Thank you. Paul, what we'll do then is we'll swear the witnesses, and then we'll let you proceed, all right?
One question, Ron, the, the documents that are referred to in the T and M letter, do they have to be marked, or just because they've already been submitted, there's no need to mark them? I believe he looked at eight, eight or nine?
Eileen, you're muted.
Yeah. Eileen, what is our last marking on the?
I have A13 is the last marking, so the next exhibit would be A14.
You've already, the documents listed in the review letter by T and M have already been submitted, right, Paul?
That's correct.
They're already marked into evidence.
Right, so do you have a copy of the exhibit list?
I do not, that's why I was asking.
I'm sorry, I thought I did send it to you with the agenda last week. I'm sending one right now.
You could take an email now on that, right?
One second.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, Eileen will send it to you.
She just wants to tell me what, I have the 1 through 9, I just need the other...
Well, 10 is the copy of the buy-sell letters that were sent to the adjoining property owners.
Okay.
11 is the proof of service dated 11/23/20.
Okay.
12 is the buy-sell letter response from the Youngs dated October 1, 20. And A13 is the buy-sell letter response from Hora dated 10/22.
So if you have anything new tonight, we'll start with A14, if you have any new exhibits.
Okay, thank you. I guess the one, I thought it was submitted, was the, the CAFRA permit?
No.
Charlie, I didn't, did you see that?
So I think it was, it might have been submitted by email over the last week. I think it was actually forwarded again today, Eileen. It's not a CAFRA permit, it's a flood hazard area verification and then GP 6 permit for a single-family dwelling within a 300-foot riparian.
I stand corrected, thank you.
So I guess that would be A14, Eileen, then.
I know there's mention in the engineer's report of the prior resolution when this property was subdivided. I don't know if you want to also make that an exhibit. I mean, it's a matter of your public record, so.
That's in is A6.
That's A6?
A6 already, Paul. Okay. Yes.
You're correct, I'm sorry.
No problem. Okay, so with that, why don't we ask your witnesses? Now, I see Ron Koenig is in.
Mark Lieber's in also. He has to be muted, unmuted.
Mr. Tropley, before we move forward real quick, Mr. Lieber, are you testifying as engineer and a planner?
Yes, I am.
It's a bulk variance, Mr. Chair, so I don't have any issues with Mr. Lieber testifying on the variance relief.
Thank you.
Fair enough.
Just wanted to clear that up real quick before we get moving. Okay?
Real quick, Mr. Ronco is unmuted, but we don't have the authority to unmute him, so he has to unmute himself.
Right.
Okay.
Is he on video also? Because I should see him if he's gonna be sworn in.
I requested him to start video.
Thank you.
I could do.
Okay. Okay, Paul, you wanna, Ron, you want to swear in the professionals?
Right, I just want to see if Mr. Lieber, pardon me, if Mr. Koenig is able to have
He just muted.
Can you hear that? Right, Mr. Koenig, do you have video?
I do.
Okay, can you please turn it on?
Turn the video on.
Okay, one second, I'm heading in now.
There he is. Thank you. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Koenig, would you please raise your right hands, take an oath? You swear the testimony or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self of God?
Yes, I do.
Yes. Thank you. Starting with you, Mr. Lieber, your full name for the record?
Yes, Mark, M-A-R-C, last name is Lieber, L-E-B, like Brian E.R.
And you'll be testifying as a planner and as an engineer, correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And Mr. Koenig, please, your name for the record?
Yes, sir. Ronald Koenig, K-O-E-N-I-G.
Thank you. Your witnesses, Mr. Mirabelli?
You're gonna start with Mr. Lieber. Mark, you want to give us your qualifications and background and licenses, please?
Yes, good evening. I have a bachelor's science degree in civil engineering from Drexel University. I am a licensed engineer since 2004. I am a licensed planner since 2005, and I am a certified municipal engineer. I have testified before numerous boards throughout Middlesex, Monmouth, actually all of the state of New Jersey, including this board as well.
We accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mark, you want to first give us an overview of the project, and then I think we'll probably go in and address the T and M letter. I think that'd be the best way to make sure we cover all aspects of the application.
Okay, I have two exhibits, one are some photos I took today, so I guess that's A15.
Yes, if you would just place a description on the, are you able to share those with, a screen share with the board?
Yes, I can.
Okay, if you would identify then A15 that you'll be showing?
It's a map of the surrounding area with four color photos taken today.
Okay.
And then A16 is a color rendering of the plan revised July 27 that was filed with the board.
Okay, thank you. A15 and A16 marked in? Okay, did you want to show A15 now?
Yep, getting it right now. So you should have on your screen a map, is that correct? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So the property is situated on Sylvan Boulevard, just east of Solomon Street. It's the red dot on this map. It's Block 35, the lot is 12.01, and it's shown on sheet, tax map 4.21. The total lot area is about 9,895 square feet. Now, it's Zone R3, which typically requires a 15,000-square-foot lot. However, where a public sewer connection is not available, the minimum required lot size defaults to the ARE1 zone requirements, which is therefore a 40,000-square-foot lot. Now, the lot was created by a prior subdivision application, which was approved by the planning board in April 5 of 1973, and I believe at the time, this was referred to as Proposed Lot 12A. So right now, the lot's vacant, and it's primarily wooded. As you look at this map, you'll notice that the surrounding uses are all residential, and these are single-family dwellings that you see around this property. I have a couple of photos I'm gonna scroll down to I took today. This one's along Sylvan Boulevard, kind of unusual, there's like a green island in the middle of the street here, larger than a typical island you would find, but the property's on the left side of this photo where the trees are. And you'll notice there's a driveway in the front, that's the driveway that belongs to the lot to the left of this. On the next page, I'm standing on that green island, I'm looking into the property, it's this wooded area. You'll notice there's a house on the left. And then the next photo, same spot, the woods are, you know, what we're here to discuss tonight, and then I show you the house on the right. And then the last photo is I'm standing, you know, on the neighbor's driveway, right near their driveway to the left, looking at this property from the side, so you could see the depth of it. Let me switch my screens here. So this one is the coloring of the variance plan, exhibit A16. Same plan that was filed, I just colored everything, so it's easy to distinguish. So what's proposed here is a two-story dwelling. It's gonna be built on a slab foundation, so there is no basement, and the house will be four bedrooms with a one-car garage. It's proposed to connect the house to public water, however, there would be a septic system in the front lawn as depicted on the plan. The driveway is approximately 41 feet long, which is enough space for two cars. And although the site is not located within a flood hazard area, it is situated in a 300-foot-wide riparian zone, and due to this fact, we did apply to the DEP for a flood hazard general permit 6 and a flood hazard verification, which authorizes disturbance in a riparian zone. The permit was issued, and the date of the permit was October 16, 2020. Now, other than the lot area, which were undersized, there are some setback variances requested. Now, again, because we have to adhere to the ARE1 zone standards, all the setbacks are increased. So our front yard setback requirement is 50 feet, our rear yard setback requirement is 40 feet, and our side yard setback requirement is 30 feet each. Unfortunately, if you apply all of these setbacks, it doesn't yield any buildable area on the lot. In fact, if you look inside the red house on this rendering, you'll see a little triangle in the center. That would be your buildable area once you apply all the zone setbacks I just discussed. So as part of the application, because we're an undersized lot, the owner reached out to the adjacent neighbors, seeking if any available land was, you know, could be purchased from them to bring this lot into conformity. There was a reply from Lot 11, which is located behind this property. Unfortunately, that lot only shares like a 26-foot segment of common lot line, so gaining any land from them doesn't really impact the buildable area. I'm gonna scroll down. This 26.4 feet... This 26.4 feet is what's shared with Lot 11. So, you know, any additional land there doesn't really gain any buildable area. Now, another response was received from Lot 12, which is to the right when you're facing the property. Their response was more in the line that, hey, do you want to buy my house? But their lot's only 100 feet wide, and if they were to give land to this lot, then that lot would not be a conforming lot either. Now, the setback variances that we are requesting are, for our front yard, 39.11 feet, where 50 is required. For side yards, we're requesting 10.23 feet on the right and 10.65 feet on the left, where 30 feet is required for each. And the rear yard, we're requesting 31.81 feet, where 40 feet is required. Now, due to the lack of public sewer, again, that's increasing our setback requirements. But if we were to compare the setbacks that are proposed to what the R3 zone actually requires, you know, if you did have a sewer connection, then our front yard only need 25 feet. Our side yards would only need 10 feet, and our rear yard would only need 30 feet, and therefore all of our setbacks would conform. So because we're in this situation where we don't have access to public sewer, it's, you know, aggravating the setbacks and, you know, necessitating the various variances that I went through. I do want to note that the dwelling does comply with the building coverage limitations and the height limitations in the zone. Are there any questions at this point?
Yeah, I have a, I have a question.
Okay.
You've got, you've got your septic. Can you bring that back up?
Certainly.
Okay, you have your septic in the front yard there. Do you know where the well is to your neighbors and where your well is going to be? You know, and both neighbors own it on either side?
We actually did request that information from the county, but the neighbors are on public water.
Okay, both neighbors on both sides?
Yes, there was only one file available, which pertained to a septic for the neighboring lot, and we are, you know, the prescribed distance away from their disposal bed that we need to construct our own septic.
Mark, you're also gonna hook into public water too, correct?
Yeah, we'll be on public water.
So there's no wells, yeah, that's, that's.
No wells, just septic.
Just septic, okay.
So, Mark, is there any septic tank proposed with the system, or is it just a disposal bed, or?
Yeah, there'll be a tank in the front of the house, and from the tank, it'll go into this distribution box you see here.
Yeah, so where's the tank in relation to the septic field and then also to the dwelling?
It'll prob, it'll probably be alongside the driveway. We did not do the final septic design and submit to the health department for permitting, because we wanted to come here first. But we did the soil logs that were witnessed by the Monmouth County Health Department, and they were approved in the field. So normally, the next step would be we prepare septic field design, submit it.
So, on that point, so the soil logs that were provided show that the water table is approximately 45 inches below existing grade. What, do you know what the required separation distance for the zone of disposal for septic system is?
I do, and I could tell you that the, the bed elevation, finished elevation will probably be, probably be about 91 and a half, which means there'll be a slight mound on the front of the lawn here for that.
How, how big a mound?
Well, right now, I have my 90 elevation coming to the front of the house. So I would have to mound up another, I don't know, foot or 18 inches. But I have plenty of room to do that in, because the property gets much wider as I get to the street.
Yeah, but you got a mound in the front yard.
I didn't, that didn't come through.
Yeah, but you got a mound in the front yard, that's the problem.
It would be graded on the final plot plan not to look like a mound, because my slab is at elevation 91.67. So you're not going to see a big mound, you know, like a pyramid in the front. It'll grade up to the field and then grade to the house pretty flat, so it wouldn't be that evident.
So, and then I just want to clarify from the board's perspective too, and Mark, so when, when you grade this out, the top of the septic system is going to be at a consistent elevation, right? So if we're saying 89.5, right, so it might be closer to the driveway, the existing grade, or did you say 89.5, or you said 91.5?
It's 91.5.
Okay, so closer to the driveway, 91.5 from existing grade 89. And then as you head, you're closer towards the corner of the.
Charlie, can I just interject? Mr. Koenig, can you mute yourself? Because everything you're doing, we can hear you. Thank you.
Yeah, so as you get closer to the eastern corner, the northeastern corner of the property, your existing grade's at 88. If you're going up to 91.5, that's three and a half feet of elevation fill there. And the curb grade is, it's hard to tell because it's zoomed out, but maybe 88.3. So I mean, you're still, you know, to me, that's three and a half feet of fill in the lot there. And that's two and a, or three and a half feet from where that contour is showing on the plan right now. That's, you know, it's a significant difference than what's being presented to the board right now.
I mean, we're here for the bulk variances, but with the understanding that if this was approved, I'd have to submit a final plot plan. But the, the grading of the septic is permitted under the current state of New Jersey.
Right, but Mark, you're not allowed to have a septic on a property less than 40,000 square feet in town. So you're here for a variance, because you're an undersized lot proposing septic. And this board does not review the plot plan. And this has been an issue for us in the past, where we've kind of overlooked the septic design and then wound up with a very unsightly mound in the front of property. So it's a sticking point for the board. So figuring out a way to get it quote-unquote "unmounted" would probably be in your best interest.
See, I'm also looking at, to the curb line, you, you've probably got about 15 feet to the curb, or 10 feet to the property line. And you're, you're at 88. And your finished elevation there, two, three feet, you're, you're probably going to have a three-foot slope down to the curb line from this septic tank in 15 feet. That, that's a pretty decent slope.
So, and then, Mark, just to add on to that too, so on the plan, I couldn't see a legend for it, but the D slash S shown from the two corners, the south or north, I guess it's southeast and northeast corner of the dwelling, those are proposed drywells?
No, that was to indicate that all the roof downspouts will be directed toward the street and not out to the back.
Okay. So what this board typically requires on, on applications, residential development on an undersized lot, obviously, there's no pervious coverage limit for the zone. But the board does require either, you know, drywells or some type of rain garden, so we're kind of mitigating some of that runoff. If that was a requirement of the board, is there an area on the property where you could physically fit those and respect separation distance to the septic field?
It would be difficult, because the distance has to be at least 50 feet away.
So, I mean, we're only talking about in the rear yards, south of the dwelling, then, I guess, would be your only space that you could fit that in and, and make the separation distance. Now, is there any way, is there, are you close enough proximity where you could tie the downspouts into maybe a municipal drainage system? Or create some kind of like overflow? I know, can you provide some just testimony on the general drainage characteristic of the property existing and what you're proposing? You know, other than obviously the mounded septic system in the front. But, you know, impact stormwater runoff to adjacent properties is what I'm, what I'm asking for.
All right, before I go on, I just, I didn't realize that the mounded septic was a very strong point here. This could be designed with an alternate septic system approach, which is allowed under the regulations, and that would drop the field about two feet.
That would be perfect, that'd be great.
I mean, there are, you know, the, what you see on your plan was just the traditional disposal field, based upon flow for a four-bedroom dwelling. But there are alternate designs that are permitted in the code that, you know, when you have a water table that's about four and a half feet down, you can do something different that would drop the bed about two feet. We could do that if that's, you know, important.
Charlie?
I would think that's something the board wants to see, Mr. Chair, and that I would want to see.
All right, let me make a note, just a sec. Okay. So right now, the property is graded, you know, we're slopes rather. If you're looking at this exhibit from left to right. So when I placed the house at 91.67, I was trying to create a, a way to get the water out to the street. Because presently, right now, you know, the water flows away from the street. So by having the garage floor at 91.17, I was able to provide a driveway that sloped to the road so that the runoff from the driveway wouldn't go behind the house. And similarly, with the downspouts, I didn't want that water to go from the roof out to the rear, so I was going to bring that around to the front, so it could be directed toward the road. But there's no catch basin in front of the property. The nearest one is in front of our neighbor here. Which, you know, that's really the closest spot.
Could you, could you run something out into the road and tie it with like a, you know, like a manhole structure or set something in line with the curb? I know there's, on the plan that's shown here on that island that you referred to earlier, there is a B inlet. I would think that there would be a drainage pipe running, you know, from west to east here, from inlet to inlet. Have, have you examined any of that, or are you aware of the infrastructure that, that exists there?
No, the only thing I noticed was a, a mark out for a gas line when I was there.
Okay, and that's shown like right above the point of beginning on the plan there?
Yeah, it's not continuous. I mean, these water valves are there. But, you know, again, I don't really know what the connectivity is as to where those pipes are running.
Okay, how about, like, the drainage characteristics at the, the rear of the property? So the, the real narrow portion that's irregular at the back of the property, can you zoom in on that? Do we know what's kind of to the south and east of that as far as?
Yeah, what happens is this whole area falls off into this tributary.
And that's, is there development in that area, or is that wooded portions of an adjacent property, or?
This is actually between houses, so there's a big 42-inch pipe that lets the water out from across, I think it's the Windmill Club, they have a big lake there. So this 42-inch pipe lets that water out, it crosses under Sylvan Boulevard. And it lets, you know, it, it opens up the pipe through a headwall into the stream, and then that's in the 300-foot repairing zone. So all this land eventually makes its way down to that brook.
So my, my suggestion, Mr. Chair, is, one, I think we want to see some kind of drywall system as long as it could fit in with separation to the septic water table. If that's not feasible, possibly some type of rain garden to provide the storage. Either means if we can allow the overflow to go to the rear of the property and get into that natural drainage course, where looking at the area, it, it appears wooded. I think that would be something that would be preferable, looking at Lot 1301 to the east. And you can see from the photos provided by the applicant and the grades on the plan there, that their, their driveway is certainly below the applicant's graded, existing grade of the property. So right now, anything just flowing to the east is going to go onto their property and onto their driveway. And I don't know what the elevation of their garage is, you know, or what the rest of their yard is. So that would be my recommendation or suggestion to the, to the board.
Mr. Sullivan, you have any problem with that?
That question to me?
Yeah, the, the, Mr. Lieber, do you have any problem with that?
No.
Okay. That answer your question, Charlie?
Yes.
If, if you look up at Sullivan, up on the street of Sullivan, if you could bring that down a little bit more the other way.
Nice, go up, show Sullivan.
Uh, there's a, if, if you look right at the corner of the property line there, right on Sullivan, there's a catch basin right there. So that, that means a pipe would have to run down Sullivan, probably runs down Sullivan to that island that we were discussing right there. So if nothing else, you know, sure, a pipe runs across that road right there, Sullivan.
Yeah, so I mean, that is a possibility, you know, we'd have to confirm that there'd be a drainage pipe going there. And then obviously, that it works with inverse and stuff like that. My, my recommendation would be, Mr. Chair, would be, that would be the preferable approach, because it's going into a conveying system, and we're not worried about separation distance. You know, if the, if the roof leaders were tied directly into that, then we know it's no issue with the, the septic field. But, you know, I would ask Mr. Lieber to examine that further, should the board rule favorably on the, on the application. If it's something that doesn't work from a, like a pitch perspective from, from the roof leaders, then I would say drywells in the rear yard with an overflow to that, to that stream in the rear, I think would also be an acceptable approach, Mr. Chair.
The only thing I can mention is, you know, it's possible this drain's connected to this, where that 42 inches.
Well, it probably runs all the way to that island across the street there.
It, it could, I mean, I, I don't know for sure, but the point is, is that if I pipe all the water direct to this line and ends up dumping out to this 42-inch pipe, it's actually the same thing as if the water overflowed and went into this ditch, it's all going to the same place. It's actually better if it runs over to land.
Okay.
I mean, this is all wooded back here.
Yeah.
I could switch.
So what I will say, Mr. Chair, it is wooded, we do have limited topography on, you know, the adjacent property, especially 1301. So, you know, we know what it is, maybe 10, 15 feet into the, their property with the driveway. Pipe it directly into the conveying system, we know for sure it's not running across their property. You know what I mean? It's going into the, the conveying system and going downstream and avoiding that completely, so.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from the board?
I thought that.
Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Sayah, can we, can we have our, can we get the meeting back, please? There we go, Mr. Sayah.
You know, Charlie, you know, we've had these discussions before with impervious surface and, you know, the lot is undersized, but the footprint of 40 by 28, I think a little bit, you know, over, overkill for the size of the lot. And I'm, I'm questioning whether or not it makes good sense, if we can maybe shrink it somewhat, to reduce some of the variances that are required on the lot, if it's possible. You know, there's, there's other ways of getting square footage with a smaller base and an overhang on the second floor, et cetera. I mean, this is, uh, this seems like a little bit too much to digest right at the moment.
Mark, before, before you respond, do you have handy, I'm sorry, a little Satan is getting out of control tonight. Do you have handy the setbacks for the underlying zone, not the ARE zoning?
Yeah, I did, I, I noted those earlier, that the underlying setbacks for R3 would be, let me get back to that.
So.
25, 25-foot front, 10-foot side, and 30-foot rear. So like, if you were to look at it from that perspective, all of our setbacks would be fully conforming.
Yeah, so this lot was serviced by public sewer, it would be a fully conforming lot. Now, is this, is the site in a mat sewer service area, Mark?
Yeah, it is.
Do you know where the closest sewer main to the property is?
I do. We spoke with, I think it's Aqua Terra, and they said at Southwestfield Road, which is on the other side of that 42-inch drainage pipe, it's about 360 feet away.
So east Southwestfield Road, you're saying, is the closest sanitary sewer?
Yes.
So that's something for the board to consider, Mr. Chair. They're asking for relief for a septic system on an undersized lot. You know, if the applicant, you know, were potentially required, they're in a sewer service area to connect to, you know, do a main extension to connect into public sewer, this would be a perfectly conforming application that would not be before the board.
So, Paul, just to. So, Paul, just to go back to your comments, is that the proposed development itself complies with the zoning of the area? The only reason that they need relief is because they're on septic, which kicks them to that higher burden of an acre lot.
Just one last, one point of clarification, sorry to jump in, Jen, the lot size would still be undersized for the R-three zone.
Oh, is it?
Using that, but you're right, all the other setbacks are.
But the, the front, the side, and the rear, the structure itself would be conforming. So it's not like they're proposing something that's out of character with the area, it's just because there's no sewer, and this is very common in certain sections of town that are technically in the sewer service area, but the lot area size per the zoning is less than the acre. This has been a comment that we've had to the governing body for a long time now with respect to addressing this issue, especially given the fact that the septic system is under the jurisdiction of the Board of Health, we really don't have any jurisdiction over it. But as far as like the setbacks, it is compliant with the underlying zoning, which is the only reason, Paul, that I have not jumped in on this, because, you know me, I'm not quiet about that kind of stuff.
So, so, let me ask the question then, are the neighbors all on that, that sewer main, or do they also have septic?
No, they're on septics.
Is there, do we know if they're running the sewer down that street anytime soon?
I don't even think it's technically feasible, because I don't know if you can get past that forty-two inch pipe that comes across from Windmill.
Well, there, there's always a way you could put a force main in if you had to. But, Matt, Matt, I, I think I saw you shake your head no.
No plans for sewer in this area.
Okay. Okay. Charlie, you have anything else? Wait, just based on this, and then we'll go through the board and see if they have questions.
Yeah, so the only other comments that I have is, you know, should the board rule favor, I'd just like to see the grading or find a little bit better in the side yards just to make sure that it's swelling, you know, to the road or to the, to the wooded portion, you know, to the stream behind the property and not onto the adjacent properties. Mark, there's no any, there's no habitable attic space, right? The four bedrooms, that's, that's the max they're gonna have, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so I have no issue with the parking, they said there's going to be three spaces, two in the driveway, one in the garage, four bedroom, two and a half spaces required. I just remind the applicant, if they're going to hook into the water, also for the driveway improvements, they're required to get a township road opening permit for those. And then obviously, if this disturbance is greater than five thousand square feet, they're got to get freilled soils. But other than that, that's all I have right now, Mr. Chair.
Great, all right, board members. Mr. Hughes, you have anything? Any questions?
No, sir, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez?
I do not, Mr. Chairman, but thank you very much.
Mr. Moretti? You're still muted, Mr. Moretti.
There you go, my mouse froze on me, I couldn't get there. Uh, I just have one question, how many bathrooms are required with a four-bedroom house? Two bedroom, two bathrooms, one bathroom, one and a half bathroom?
Mr. Lieber?
I'm trying to pull up the architectural plan. I, I don't know if there's a so-called requirement, but I can tell you what this house has. Just bear with me, this is the plan that I believe is exhibit A-five.
Three bedrooms, or three bathrooms.
Let me just check it out.
Correct, two and a half baths.
All right, so I have on the first floor, a half bath. And on the second floor, there's two full baths. So yeah, two and a half.
Charlie, does that meet, meet requirements?
I, I honestly, I, I don't know that answer off the top of my head. I would, you know, rely on Mr. Lieber's testimony on what he's showing on the plan, is that you feel that's realistic for the two and a half bathrooms and what's required for single-family dwelling with four bedrooms?
I mean, I can tell you, I have a four-bedroom house and we have two and a half bathrooms, so.
Okay, I, I know it sounds like a silly question, but I know if you put a, another room into your house, the township requires you to add, add a bath or make it a full bath, make it a half bath, that's all. I was just, just trying to check into that, no, no big issue with me.
Nope, cool. That wasn't a silly question. Is it it, Mr. Moretti?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Cantor?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sayah, any further?
I'm good.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm looking at the pictures on Google, there, there are a lot of mature trees, are any of these going to be left? Or are we just, are they going to clear cut everything?
Well, everything in the front's going to be removed, because when you exit the property and you look to the right, there's an obstruction of the sight distance with the trees. So we had on the plan like a clearing limit that was behind the house, where the back stem would be left wooded, but the front of it's pretty much going to be cleared.
Okay, but in the back, you're going to keep whatever you can that's mature, because you're looking, I'm looking at sixty, seventy-five foot trees, and whatever the applicant can do would make me feel a little bit better.
Yeah, you know, with the tree clearing, it's, I'm pretty sensitive about that as well, so we try not to just blatantly cut everything down, if you know what I mean?
Yeah.
You know, if there's something that can be saved, if it's a specimen tree, or if it's in good shape, you know, we try and keep those trees.
Okay, that's all I have for this time.
Mark, following up on that, along the east property line to thirteen oh one, it looks like the tree clearing limit is right to the property line and the green existing tree line on thirteen oh one is, is pretty narrow. Are we expecting to clear that completely, so there's no trees along that property line? Or is there trees on the neighbor's property that are going to remain, or is there going to be, you know, any kind of buffering that still remains there?
Well, some of the trees are his, you know, so whatever is his, obviously, we would leave, but if you want, we could probably locate the trees all up and down that line. And then, you know, on the plot plan, we could show precisely which trees are going to remain and which trees would not.
Yeah, and, and what I would say is, Mr. Chair, depending on what that looks like, maybe review with the board CTE to see if maybe some additional, you know, plantings could be supplemented there, just to, you know, it'd be a shame to have a nice wooded buffer there and then completely clear cut that, you know, along that property line, if the board should, should, should think that's, you know, something required. I certainly think, you know, i- it should be.
Do you have a problem with that, Mr. Lieber?
None at all.
Okay. Okay, I, at this time. Paul, you, or Ron, you want to open up to public for questions of this witness?
You know, the only thing I might suggest before he does that is if we might want to go through the T and M letter to just make sure we have everything covered, okay?
That'll work.
So if you want to look at the T, I think a lot of it has been covered already, and I think Mr. Kuntliff is, is already addressed a lot of it already, but just to make sure we have everything, I think we should be thorough. So the, the, if we start on the, really, what is the third page, the waivers that are requested? Mark, you want to address the, the, the two waivers that we are, we're looking for and why we're asking for those?
Yes, we need an open public records request to the Health Department for surrounding plans showing septics. They're, they wrote back to us that one of the lots, they didn't have any records where I believe that was lot thirteen oh one, and that none of them were on well. So we technically need a waiver because we can't locate the septic that is on the lot that they have no records on. But taking measurements on my plan, it seems that it's without a doubt at least fifty feet away based upon locations of our septic and other trees and features like that.
What about to, to your proposed residence that you're building? Do you have the minimum setback for that?
Yeah, we do, it's ten feet to a property line and fifteen feet to a building that has a non-basement foundation. There was another question about sidewalks, there were no sidewalks in the area. So, my plan doesn't show sidewalks, but I, I would need the board's guidance as to whether they wanted sidewalks in this area. You know, there, there's, there's no sidewalk on either side of the shootover on this part of Sylvan, so if you go up Sylvan Boulevard, I guess that'd be to the northeast, then the, you know, there's some sidewalks in that area, but I wasn't sure, you know, if you wanted sidewalks in this area or if you prefer a contribution.
Charlie, Jen?
Chair, what I would, you know, there is no adjacent sidewalk, the nearest one has got to be at least three hundred feet away, you know, I wouldn't take an issue if the board decided to grant relief of it. You know, and then obviously the tree contribution is no longer required. You know, it'd kind of be sidewalks to nowhere on this property, kind of in the middle of the development here.
You mean, so you want a contribution to the sidewalk?
That's no longer required, Mr. Chair, that's.
Okay.
So if we go to page four, I think we've already talked about the, the permit for the, from the NJDEP, so I'm not sure we really need to address that, I think it's already been addressed in number six.
Six is about the location of sewer.
Well, I think we discussed that the only way to get to the, the main sewer would be an extension of over three hundred feet. It doesn't appear that any of the other properties in the area are, they're all septic, and I don't think there's any plan to extend the sewer system at this time. I think we've already talked about number eight, we understand that this is going to have to be approved by the Monmouth County Board of Health, and I'm sure the, the Howell Board of Health, we understand that, so we're going to comply with both of those. The, number ten, Mark, you want to just address the utilities?
Yeah, there's gas and water in the street, and this area is all overhead electric and phone, so we would apply for, you know, those four services with, you know, the respective utilities.
And then eleven talks about the grading, which I think has, has already been addressed. Number twelve, Mark testified there would be no basement. With respect to number thirteen, Mark, you want to address that?
Yeah, the concrete, in fact, I think we might have skipped a comment about the patio location in the rear of the house. There's a requirement for a separation to a patio, and our intention is to shift the patio over to comply with that setback. So, it's just a concrete flat patio, I believe it's ten by ten.
So, and then just to clarify that, Mark, that's shown on the plans that was submitted to DEP for your general permit, right? And you're limited to that ten by ten?
Yes, um, the three-hundred-foot repairing zone narrowly clips the corner of the patio, so, I mean, we can shift it over to comply with the additional four-foot required setback.
What I just want to get on the record is it's a ten by ten foot patio, you know, I think if you go in and put something more extensive, that would require an amendment of your foot hazard area verification and all that stuff, you know, after the fact, so.
Right.
Well, there's no impervious coverage limit in the zone for this property, I don't believe, there are, certainly are the environmental constraints for that, so.
Understood.
And then as far as the driveway, the concrete and the, and the pavement, would you agree to comply with the township warrants requirements for the parking, for the asphalt driveway section and the concrete, I think it's six-inch concrete, and then it might be, I believe it's three and two, I want to say, of base to top?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. And, Mr. Chair, I can say he's touched on all the remaining comments in my letter, so I'm satisfied with the responses.
Okay, so at this time, then, we don't have any more testimony from Mr. Lieber.
Hey, Jen, you good?
I'm good.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to open it, I have a motion to open to public, and we'll open to public for questions only, they'll be allowed at the end of the, all testimony to have their comments. Okay, can I have a motion to open to public?
Chairman, I open, make a motion to open to public, sir.
Motion by Mr. Sayah, do I have a second?
I second it.
Second by Mr. Moretti, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Eileen, at this time, we will open to public for questions only of Mr. Lieber.
Members of the public listening to the public hearing tonight, if you have any questions of Mr. Lieber regarding this application, please use the raise your hand feature, and we will bring you into the meeting one at a time. And before I forget, Mr. Lieber, please send me by email tomorrow exhibits fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, that's the permit, the map of the surrounding area with the photos and the colorized plan.
Will do.
Thank you. We do have someone we're going to bring into the meeting. Mr. Fiderer, you're on the meeting?
Yes. Thank you, you guys hear me?
Yes. Hold on one second.
Mr. Troppe, you might swear in the.
Well, let me, let me make an inquiry, if I may, Mr. Fiderer, I see you are an attorney, correct, sir?
That's correct.
Are you appearing on behalf of a citizen, or are you appearing on behalf of yourself, or you are a witness?
I'm appearing on behalf of Bruce and Donna Turner, who reside at twenty-one Sylvan Drive, their lot thirteen point oh one.
Okay, so then would you please enter your appearance?
Thank you, Edmund F. Fiderer, Jr., McCumber, McCumber and Louver, Red Bank, New Jersey, on behalf of adjacent property owners Donna and Bruce Turner, located at twenty-one Sylvan Drive.
And it's your intention to cross-examine, I presume, Mr. Lieber?
I do have a few questions of Mr. Lieber.
Sure, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
May he proceed?
Yes, sir, you sure may.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, I, I know there was a bit of discussion with regards to the impact that this property would have specifically on lot thirteen point oh one, and some of those discussions, I believe, had the mistake in premise on the fact that the property twenty-one Sylvan Drive is not serviced by a, a public sewer system, when in fact it is. My clients had advised that twenty-one Sylvan Drive, that's lot thirteen point oh one, is in fact serviced by a public sewer line. And I wanted to know if there was any impact of that and on your testimony today, specifically with respect to the ability for the subjects, the subject application to have a sewer line installed and tapped into a, the public system where you would avoid a, a septic system at all.
Just give me a second, I'm checking what the Health Department had written back to me. Did they have a prior septic system?
I don't believe they have. It's my understanding that as part of the applications to build the property, they were required to tap into an existing sewer line.
There's sewer there, then they wouldn't even be at this part.
Give me one second.
Yeah, wouldn't that make sense since they couldn't find anything on the Oprah on a septic system on that part, is that the one?
That's the one.
Yeah. That might be why they didn't find it.
Just bear with me, I'm trying to bring up, because there are a few emails that went back and forth on this. Is that your primary question? Is that your primary question or you have other questions?
No, I have other questions predominantly with respect to the impact the septic system and the mound would have on drainage. Specifically drainage of your lot draining and flowing towards my client's property 13.01. I know there was some discussion with regards to the mounting and some additional dry wells and things of that nature that would be required. And as a professional, would the installation of dry wells lessen or stop the impact of water flowing from off of your client's property onto the adjacent property 12.01?
Yeah, well, typically a dry well would take the water into the soil where it could infiltrate. And, you know, given those situations, it would be, you know, a way to hold back the water instead of like a direct discharge where, you know, a downspout from a house would just let the water out, you know, in like a free flow situation.
Understood, but is your testimony that the building of the mound for the septic system and the improvements being made to this now vacant lot, that that wouldn't have any impact on my client's property with respect to the flow of stormwater and drainage?
Well, we're going to first of all, design the septic as an alternate system so that there would not be that mound that was discussed earlier. So that being said, the lot will be graded out to the street. If the lot's graded out to the street, then no stormwater runoff from the driveway would go onto your client's property. And with the dry wells for the roof area, you know, we'd be able to dissipate that water into the soil.
Understood. Now, with respect to the alternative septic system that was being discussed, is there an ability to relocate that from where it's presently located? So that the position or location of the footprint of this proposed property be removed more to the center line of the property and further from my client's property line?
I mean, what you're asking would require like everything to be mirror image, so to say? Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, what I'm asking is with an alternative septic system, is there an ability to relocate the proposed structure more towards the center of the property so that it's not as close to the property line as it's proposed currently?
Not so much the structure itself, but you know, doing an alternative design actually reduces the size of the bed. So, you know, that would give more separation from the bed to lot 13.01.
You're saying the alternative system would, would what?
It reduces the size of the disposal field.
And by doing so, is there an ability to relocate the proposed location of the property further from the property line that adjoins my clients?
You mean the house? Is that what you're saying, the house?
Yes, whether or not the proposed house would be able to be relocated to an area on the lot that is further from the property line. I believe you're infringing, the proposed structure would impinge upon the side yard setbacks there that is along lot 12.01. And by reducing the septic field, would you be able to relocate the house? So at least on that sideline, there'd be conformance?
I am looking at the zone right now. If, if we had to provide, let's say, the 30 foot side yard, then there's no, there's no way to provide a 30 foot side yard to lot 13.01. Right now, we have a 10.65 foot side yard. The only way to increase that would be to move the house closer to the street, which would make the driveway, two car driveway in width instead of length. So in other words, if the disposal field got smaller, then the house can get closer to the street and the driveway would become a two car wide driveway. So we could still get two cars on the driveway. But there's really no functional or practical way to get a 30 foot side yard setback because that standard is from a one acre zone. Whereas the standard for the zone that the lots are in right now is a 10 foot side yard.
So there's no way to relocate the property with the smaller septic field that's being proposed now?
Not to, not to a conforming 30 foot side yard, no.
Is there a way to move the house even five or 10 or 15 feet? So to provide additional separation from lot 13.01?
As I said, if we move the house closer to the street, you know, the lot gets wider as you move closer to the road. So, you know, there would be some more distance created over there, but I can't give you the exact distance, you know, in this forum right now, because I don't know what the ultimate size of the disposal bed is going to be, which is really driving, you know, the distance to everything. The disposal bed has to be a certain distance from the house.
And Mark, if you move the house closer to the street, you're exacerbating that variance, correct?
Correct. I mean, then you're in the territory where the front yard setback would become less than the 39 feet we're asking for now.
Can I just ask a quick question just for context? Mr. Federer's client, when we're looking at the house from that island on across the street, which side is it? We're talking about the right side?
My client is to the left.
To the left. Thank you, sir. Okay.
To the left.
Mr. Troply, real quick. I actually, I need to go to Charlie. Charlie, if there is sewer at 13.01 and there was a way that this applicant could tap in, then he meets all the requirements, correct?
Other than the minimum lot area, that would be correct. So what I will say is to hook into the sewer would probably require a main extension in the roadway, which is a lot more of a burden on the applicant as far as outside agency approvals. You need a TWA from DEP for a main extension. You know, as opposed to just going to Monmouth County Board of Health for an individual septic system permit. So there's the additional burden of the outside agency approval and then also there's definitely a different cost. Obviously, this board doesn't consider that as, you know, valid reason under the MLUL. But yes, if this was serviced by public sewer, this would be conforming other than a lot area.
Charlie, is the whole neighborhood on septic?
So I can tell you in the Oprah request that Mr. Lieber filed for the applicant, lot 12 was shown to be on septic. I believe the septic system is to the south and west of like the proposed dwelling on the subject property. So that's why the septic system is where it is. I think Mr. Lieber in his response to my questions said, one, the septic location is where it is to avoid the septic separation for lot 12. And they also surmised that there wasn't septic on 13.01 along the west side of that property because of that asphalt driveway. So that's how we looked at it. As far as the rest of the development, I don't know other than it is in the sanitary sewer service area. And to me, it certainly looks like there is sanitary sewer at the intersection of, I think Mr. Lieber alluded to it previously. Let me just pull up Google Earth here and make sure I have the right street.
I could speak to that a little bit too, Charlie. There's a little bit of a hole in the donut here. There's set, there's sewer in the windmill club. This is a connection from Locust Ave. Sylvan X is a connection into Candlewood. So to the north and east into Candlewood more, there is sewer, but this area of Sylvan from this curve down to Locust is a bit of a hole, a hole in the donut and there's no sewer from, they're right about at the border. But from there down to Locust, there's no sewer in that area.
So this lot that we're looking to, let's say, you know, address in terms of setback, et cetera, they're on septic as well? 13.01, is it on septic as well?
I think Mr. Federer provided testimony that it's on public sanitary, right?
13.01 is serviced by the public sewer.
It's on sewer, so it's right next door sewer.
Yeah.
The main is in Southwestfield though, Jen. Two properties up.
Right, but they have to connect somehow.
Is that like a lateral off the edge of the road that connects it to it or?
I don't have that information.
Yeah.
Like if the sewer is not, like if it was right there, there's no reason why this would require a septic, they would connect to the sewer. So if that's on sewer.
Where, where is the main that lot 13.01 is connected to?
I'm, I'm, I don't know.
I mean, do they have a private easement through the neighbor's lot to get to Southwestfield?
So if we can, unfortunately with Zoom, my clients haven't been invited in. I don't know if you can invite my clients in. They are listening and they may be able to provide the answer at that time. But I don't know the answer to that just yet. Looks like Bruce Turner is raising his hand. He may be able to answer your question now if you.
We'll, we'll need to swear him in and if he would just unmute and turn his video on, please.
Matt, you're going to let him in?
He's in.
He's in. We're just waiting for him to turn his video.
I've asked him to start his video and unmute. I can't do anything more.
Would you want, thank, very good. You're on mute. Sir, would you raise your right hand? Swear the testimony you'll give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. So I'll be God.
Yes.
Very good. State your name, please, sir, and your address.
Yes, Bruce Turner, 21 Sylvan Boulevard, Howell.
Okay, Mr. Federer.
Thank you. Bruce, there is a question that was just previously posed to you with respect to the sewer system and the lines that your property is connected to. Could you provide the board with some testimony with regards to your knowledge of the location of that sewer line and how in fact your system is connected to that sewer system?
Yes, we are connected to the Southwestfield Sewer System. And the adjacent property to us at the corner of Southwestfield and Sylvan Boulevard is where we are tied in through. When the, when the builder built our house back in the day, he was originally building the house on Southwestfield. And where our property is currently at was going to be his backyard. And he went back and subdivided the lot and he built our house and tied into that sewer.
So do you have an easement through that lot that's on the corner to go out to the adjacent lot? Or do you tie in off Sylvan?
No, we don't have an easement to go through the adjoining lot. The only easement on our property is for that, that 42 inch pipe. It's the only easement on our property.
The 42 inch pipe for the sewer or for the drainage? A 42 inch sewer pipe?
Yeah, well, that drawing that had the, where it run off on the windmill clubs and.
Yeah, so that's, that's drainage.
Yeah, so we, yeah, we have an easement for that on our property. That's the only easement we have.
So then where does the sewer connect? Does it connect in the road or does it connect on your neighbor's property?
I believe, and I'm not 100% sure, I believe it connects on my neighbor's property.
So then you would have to have some kind of easement, right, to connect there?
If there's an easement, I don't know about it.
Well, I mean, a simple question would be like, let's say your neighbor sells his house and to somebody that's not interested in having you tie in, if you don't have rights, you're in serious trouble. I'm just going to throw that out there.
So, so Jen, if I could add on to that too, it's, it is also possible. So when he says it crosses the neighbor's property, I think there is a decent portion of right of way beyond the curb to the front property line. So it could, it could be possible that a lateral does run in that grassed area between the property line and the curb. You know, so when we say crosses a property, it's actually in the township right of way. What I will say now is, you know, I guess if this was in Aqua's Santa Sewer Service Area, it would obviously be dependent on them, but I can't imagine that they're going to let you tie into someone else's sanitary sewer lateral. You know, with the current, with the current code, it would have to be like a main extension for that, that into the public sewer.
Right. Okay. I'm just trying to cross every avenue here. Okay. Okay, Mr. Federer, you want to continue, sir?
Now, with respect to the footprint, I think the testimony was previously that it's a 40 by 28 foot footprint for the proposed home that's being built. Is there any way that that structure could be reduced? And by reducing the size of the structure, the size of that footprint, wouldn't we also then be able to reduce the amount of encroachment on the side yard setbacks?
I'll have to ask my client if he would entertain reducing the size.
It would be my understanding that there's no requirement to have a four bedroom, two and a half bath or three, three bath house on this property. And by reducing the size of the house, by reducing the size of the footprint, the question is whether or not that would be able to reduce the, the side yard, the amount of side yard setbacks that.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Why this house was picked was because he wanted to conform with the characteristics of the neighboring properties. And that's what, that's what I was trying to do. Which is the characteristics of the area.
Mark, I do have a question for you with respect to the characteristics of the area. And are you aware that the, that the, the, most of the houses down these streets here in this, in this immediate area are both two-story and single-story structures, some of which are significantly smaller than the one proposed?
I wouldn't say they're significantly smaller. One of the things I noticed when I was out there is that there are houses that are ranches, but they have much larger footprints than the two-story homes. And then there's also two-story homes that have, you know, smaller footprints than the house next door to us. But there's also homes that have two car garages that are side entry. Some have two car garages that are front entry. Some have one car garages, some have detached garages, and some don't have any garages. So, you know, when the architect had considered all that, you know, and he tried to design a house that was, you know, notably smaller for a smaller lot, you know, that's why he picked the one car garage. You know, in particular, these bedrooms, they're not huge bedrooms. I mean, I think they're 140 square feet or something each. You know, there's no separate living room and dining room. It's not like a center hall colonial where you have a separate living room, a separate dining room, and a separate family room. You know, it's, you know, a rather modest sized home, which in obviously today's current real estate market, people are looking for a choice in homes. Not everybody can afford, you know, 4,000 square feet or whatnot.
And has there been any thought or any plans drawn with respect to changing the location of the garage in the driveway from one side of the property to the other side of the property? The other side of the home?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, keep in mind, the house does not have a basement. So, you know, you have to provide a reasonable amount of room inside. And having a one car garage was what we thought was most appropriate. We situated it on the right side, as you see, you know, because we had done our soil testing for the septic in the larger open part of the lot, which is where it's more easily accommodated. Otherwise, we could flip it and put the house, you know, on the, when you face in on the left side and put the septic on the right side. I don't think that would address your comment, though.
But with respect, I guess it does to a certain extent, and that is the proposed plan right now is showing the driveway and garage area closest to 13.01, closest to my client's property.
No, we have it the opposite. The driveway is on the right side of our property because their driveway is on their right side.
Okay, I must have been looking at the plan. Okay. So the driveway is far on the side furthest from, from the property line that separates.
Lot 12.
12.01 and 13.01.
Lot 12.
Now, you, you did mention, and I, I don't know if this is something that, that you would, you're qualified to testify about, but you did mention the prior subdivision that had occurred. Uh, and that back in nineteen seventy-three, there was a subdivision application that was approved by the board, at which time lots thirteen point oh one and twelve point oh one, and I believe fourteen point oh one were formed. Uh, I believe that resolution wa- is an exhibit to the uh, to the application. Uh, are, are you aware whether or not that application created this property, uh, twelve point oh one as a undersized, non-conforming property?
I mean, I have the copy of the resolution and I have a copy of the subdivision map showing the creation of a lot, but I can't tell you what the bulk requirements were when that lot was created.
Uh, and as it can, as it exists today, it's a, it would be considered a non-conforming or undersized lot, correct?
Yes.
I have no further questions.
Okay.
Mark, as a follow-up to that question though, there's nothing in the resolution creating that subdivision which put any prohibition on the development of this lot. Is that correct?
It is.
Thank you.
Hey, Eileen, is there anybody else in the public?
I, I just wanna really quick answer one question. Um, I'm familiar with the bulk standards. I've done some research all the way back. Um, there's a, we have a bulk standard table. Actually, I could share a screen showing it. The bulk standard table, uh, we could enter this into evidence if you'd like. Um, from nineteen seventy-nine, um, this is one of the first bulk standard tables that we had that was in our ordinance. And R three detached, um, single family had a clustered option, which is right here. Um, minimum lot size was eight thousand square feet, so most likely, um, just as a an assumption because nobody here was around in nineteen seventy-three approving this. Uh, I believe that this would have been the bulk standard table used.
So in nineteen seventy-three, this would then conform me correctly.
We've since removed the R three clustered um, uh, zoning. Uh, there's no such thing as R three clustering. Uh, this is kinda created a few non-conformities for lot size um, in our R three zones, specifically Candlewood, Ramtown, different areas. There's something in our master plan to fix that, but that's a side note. Um, but ultimately, everything's just changed to the standard R three zoning that we see now, which is the fifteen thousand square foot minimum lot size.
Thank you, sir.
Well, we, we're gonna mark that as B one, board one.
Actually, it'll be B twelve.
B twelve.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem. So more.
Okay, Eileen, is there anyone else from the public that is raising their hand?
There's no one else in the meeting other than the next applicant, so we're fine.
Okay. Okay, guys, thank, thank you. Mr. Federer and Mr. Turner, thank y'all very much. Uh, we will be opening up for comments at the end of the, the hearing here. So. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
I need a motion to close. Thank you, Mr. Sayah.
I'll second, I'll second, sir.
Mr. Hughes, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, seeing that. Okay, uh, Paul, at, at this time, we're, but whenever we switch the testimony or switching hats for Mr. Lieber, we're uh, we're gonna take about a ten-minute break if you don't mind.
No problem.
Okay.
The board will now recess. We'll be back at eight fifty-four. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew, Mr. Gonzalez, are you, you there?
I'm not getting any response, so.
Well, we can move forward, I guess. Hey, it's up to you, Matt Paul. You wanna give him a few more seconds? There he is.
Well, I apologize. I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, it's okay. Paul, you wanna continue?
Well, at this point, we don't, we have no more testimony to present. I think Mark might have a couple of comments that he wants to make.
Are we gonna put any planning testimony on?
Mark?
Mr. Chair, he did, he did testify to the relief that was necessary and the rationale behind it. It's bulk relief. It's not a de-variant, so it's not, they doesn't require the same level of relief. So I'm satisfied from my perspective that he put on enough testify, I'm sorry, enough testimony, in my opinion, to address the relief that was requested, but I would defer to you guys if you want more.
Okay.
Do you wanna summarize that testimony, Mark?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, look, uh, to be super simplified, the project is just an infill lot. You know, it's surrounded by fully developed properties of similar uses. You know, we're not asking for a building coverage variance. Um, the house is somewhat smaller for the area. Uh, I, I offered to do the alternate septic. I did run some numbers on the, the break we just had, and I could get the disposal field down about twenty to twenty-five percent in size. And it'd also be two feet lower into the soil with that different design. Um, we're gonna offer to do the dry wells to, you know, accommodate the roof runoff. And uh, you know, this did go under the uh, review of the NJDEP. Uh, they do look at some of these aspects uh, with regard to environmental impacts, and they did issue a permit for, you know, construction, the repairing zone. And uh, we would be happy to locate the trees on the common lot line with the neighbor to, just to be sure that, you know, both their trees are not disturbed and that any trees we can retain, we would definitely retain.
Okay. Okay. Charlie? Do you have any other?
Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Jennifer?
No, sir.
Uh, real quick, I would like to go through the list of papers from all of the outside agencies that we do have. Eileen, I have one that, that's a copy of uh, the, the agenda or the links. Uh, I, it's really, really small print.
What are you looking for?
I was looking for the comments, um.
The only comments that I saw was from the Board of Health. And they said that there were satisfactory soil logs witnessed by the department. And prior to the building permits being issued, deceptive plan must be approved. And then the only other one that I believe we received is from the Shade Tree uh, Commission, which had basically no comments.
Right, and also the Fire Bureau had no comment. Yeah, they, just give.
Nor did the Environmental Commission.
Right.
Oh wait, hold on, hold on, hold on. Hey, they commented saying they've heard the site may be a problem for traffic.
What?
It says, we've heard that the site may be a problem for traffic, cause that's environmental. And the sightlines and that they have concerns with trees are gonna be taken down. That's what the, that's what the Environmental Commission has to say. I don't necessarily think that traffic and sightlines are within their purview and they're allowed to take down trees. So I don't really know what there is to address with respect to that.
And then there's another Environmental Commission. Two, there's two comments. One says no comments at this time. And then the other one says, what? So we got two.
The one that I read was from August or September eleven, twenty twenty, so that's later.
And then I got July.
Traffic and sightlines is not an environmental commission issue.
Right.
And trees that come down are, like, people are allowed to take trees down on their property, so. It, you know, I understand that they have some concerns, but that's not really their purview.
No, I'm just making sure we covered the letters.
Yeah. No, I agree.
That's all. Okay. I guess at this time I'll take a motion unless the board has any further questions or comments. Uh, Mr. Hughes?
I'm just curious. I'm, I'm pretty sure I, I got this straight now, but we're at a point where we we're hooking into the city sewer is really not an option, right? Is that our conclusion on that?
Mr. Lieber?
Um, so the distance to the manhole in the main on the side street is about three hundred and sixty feet. But again, I have more of a technical concern, which is how do we get by that?
Forty-two inch pipe.
Right, and if we have to do gravity sewer, um, as the board engineer indicated, you know, you first have to get approval from the sewer company, then it has to go down to the DEP for a tree works permit. Um.
So, I, I, I get all that, uh, Mr. Lieber. I'm just saying with, the neighbor was talking about that, that's not an option. The, the whole, they, they're tied in and this, these folks trying to tie into that is not an option, correct?
You know, believe me, like, if we had an easy way to tie in, we would, you know.
I just wanted to make, I just wanna make sure I'm clear on the fact that that's off the table. Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other from the board?
Mr. Chairman, following up on Mr. Hughes, you know, for Mr. Lieber. So have we explored all the options for tying in? Do we actually know where all that underground sewer pipe is, you know, transiting? And isn't it easy tap-in of something that we don't even know about?
The only pipe I'm sure about is that forty-two inch pipe.
So, so why are we even continuing without exploring what else is there?
Well, I mean, there's also a practical difficulty, which, you know, sewer extensions running about two hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars a foot. You know, for a single home connection, it just seems completely infeasible to spend that kind of money. You're talking like almost a hundred thousand dollars.
Sure, but I'm asking, is there an easy tap-in that we're not aware of?
Uh, I don't, I, I mean, other than cutting open the street, I, I'm not, I don't see it. Like I said.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Didn't they mention that the uh, thirteen oh one lot, they have sewerage there and it's a line running up between the two properties and?
No, there, they said that he tied in through that property. We're not a hundred percent sure where. The line between two properties is drainage. But perhaps, and I, and I'm sorry, but you're no longer like on my screen, but perhaps the attorney for the adjacent property owner could help facilitate this by providing us with information on how his client tied into the sewer. And it's just an easy tie-in. I'm sure this applicant will be happier to just tie into the sewer than to create an entire septic system. But if it's not, then, you know, we are where we are.
Well, I, I, I'm gonna jump in right now.
He's back, before you go, one of the.
I, I understand, but the thing about it is they just can't cut across thirteen oh one without an easement to tie into the sewer. That, that, that's a problem. You know, if, if, if they tapped in, in the street, then that may be a possibility. But if they're tapped in, you know, if they have to go through private property to tap into the sewer, that's gonna be a big issue.
Yeah, me, me being in real estate too, I know too that, you know, unless that's going into a main, it's, yeah, uh, you know, piggybacking on somebody else's connection is probably not.
Yeah, do it.
Yeah.
Sanitary sewer lateral is only sized for a certain amount of flow. And, you know, if it's, it sounds like if it's a lateral, the thirteen oh one and the, and the property on the corner are already tied onto that. Now you wanna tie on the third. And then obviously the utility owner, Aqua or whoever it is that owns the sanitary there, um, they would have comment. I doubt that that would be something that they would allow as um, you know, as a utility owner.
Well, see, I just don't see an option there for tapping into public sewer unless it, A, number one, you've got a lot of money to be able to either put in a pump station that you could pump it out or, you know, have a lot of money to do a gravity flow. That is even if the sewage authority will let you do that. You know, that, that, there's so many contingencies there.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to bring that up to make sure that issue is clear that it's not possible. It's beyond reasonable, reasonableness.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chair, just to add on to that, what I will say is uh, at least on the site plan, we're, you know, we're, we're going off of what Mr. Lieber is saying with inverts. Obviously, it's a forty-two inch storm drain. That is a pretty sizable storm drain crossing Sylvan Boulevard. There aren't any inverts on the plans for any of the storm drainage, and we don't know any of the inverts for the sanitary at that next, next intersection over. So, you know, to, to a hundred definitively rule that out, that it can't be done by gravity, you know, I don't know that we can say that right now. Um, you know, I think, you know, to say that, you would have to explore it further. We're just going off of, you know, obviously what Mr. Lieber, you know, his testimony is on it. So take that as you, as you will.
Thank you. Okay, any other from the board members? Okay, at this time, I'll take a motion to open the public for comments.
Make a motion, open it up to public.
Second.
Mr. Moretti, second by Mr. Hughes, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Eileen, at this time, we'll open up the public comments. You're muted, Eileen. You're muted. There you go.
The chairman has opened up the hearing for public comments on this application. If anyone has anything they wish to say, please use the raise your hand feature and we'll bring you into the meeting. Thank you.
I think Mr. Fritter has. Mr. Federer?
Mr. Federer, you have something?
Yeah.
You're on mute. You're muted, Mr. Federer.
There we go. Okay, there we go. I didn't see the raise your hand option. Okay.
I think because you're already in the meeting.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay. Okay. So again, I represent Donna and Bruce Turner, lot thirteen point oh one. And with respect to the testimony that we heard, I, I just do wanna reiterate and bring to the board's attention a couple of things. The first is, with respect to the alternative septic system that the applicant is now proposing, if that septic field can be smaller, and I believe the testimony was by about as much as twenty-five percent, uh, my clients certainly urge the board to consider having the applicant relocate the, the location of the structure to a location that's further removed from the adjoining property line. Uh, that would do a number of things. The first thing it would do is it would create more separation between the two structures, which is very important from a visual and a planning perspective. It'll also give the uh, any uh, stormwater runoff, any drainage issues that might be further complicated by the building of this property and the installation of the driveway where it is off of the property line a little bit, so that any water could be dealt with in a more uh, meaningful fashion, in a fashion that would be less of a burden on my client's property. Uh, my clients have stated uh, to me privately, uh, and I do wanna bring to the board's attention uh, that in times of heavy storms, there is quite of water that percolates and, and, and tends to puddle in the area of the property lines here between these two parties. Uh, and we believe that that would be further exasperated by the construction of this home so close to the property line. Uh, we had discussed briefly the patio that's being uh, uh, proposed by the applicant. Uh, I just wanna bring to the board's attention that that patio is going to be approximately six feet off of the property line and in, 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 in an area that is uh, within several feet of my client's property, something that would uh, take away from the privacy that my clients have previously enjoyed. Uh, and we're looking that if at all that patio can be relocated to an area more central to the home or in an area not so close to the property line. That's something we would wanna have addressed. Uh, lastly, with regards to the size of the home, uh, we're looking at a property that's gonna have a foundation or a footprint of forty by twenty-eight. And while I do understand that the applicant's position is that that size home fits within the. And while I do understand that the applicant's position is that that size home fits within the, the neighborhood. Uh, my client's position is that you don't need to have a home so large. A smaller home, a home with a smaller footprint could certainly lessen the, uh, the impact that, uh, the property's location, uh, has on the, uh, the side yard setbacks. Uh, the home further away from my client's property line is something that my clients are, uh, very, uh, I think, I think very strongly about. Uh, lastly, I, I do want to just bring to the board's attention again, and this is something that's more as a matter of law, but there is case law out there that talks about hardships and hardship applications just like this. And those that are deemed self-imposed by way of prior subdivisions. Uh, this property is as a result of a subdivision that occurred. And while that subdivision occurred, uh, forty years ago, back in nineteen seventy-three. And that while the zoning, uh, was different than it exists today, there is no, uh, testimony of the applicant, uh, and there's no evidence that shows that, uh, there's any reason why uh, a hardship application should be granted when the hardship is one that was self-imposed by way of the subdivision. Uh, the case law is relatively on point with regards to these. And it states that where the hardship has been created by an applicant or a predecessor in title, uh, relief is typically or normally denied. Uh, in this case, the avail, the availability of the hardship, uh, shouldn't, I'm sorry, not the availability, the, the, uh, the hardship itself and the relief that's requested by the board, uh, the, the financial, uh, the, the financial, uh, uh, windfall that an applicant would have with regards to being able to build and sell a home on the property uh, shouldn't be a consideration. If it costs more to build a home, uh, and avoid a hardship application, then the applicant should be required to build the home so that these variances in the application is not required. Thank you for the board's attention.
Okay, Eileen, is there anyone else from the public wishing to make a comment?
The only other person on the meeting is Mr. Turner.
Okay.
Or our next applicant, and I don't see Mr. Turner with his hand raised.
Well, his, his lawyer did all the speaking for him, so.
Well, I, I, I did, I did speak for him. I don't know if Mr. Turner, uh, would like to, to speak on his own behalf as well. If he is available and he'd like to speak.
Well, when, when the applicant, when the, when a party is represented by an attorney, generally, we just permit the attorney to, to speak on behalf of, of the client.
Yes. You, you could ask him questions, you know, that, that, that's how you can.
Actually, Mr. Chair, I, I think we're beyond that point.
Yeah, I do too.
Oh, you know, this is just for comment only, and of course, Mr. Mirabelli will have the opportunity to, um, you know, make a closing statement and then, uh, we'll see whatever the board wishes to do. Uh, with respect to what Charlie has put forth as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, seeing none, none, none further from the public, can I have a motion to close?
Motion to close, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Martins.
Second.
Mr. Moretti, second.
And Mr. Hughes.
Hughes.
Mr. Hughes. Okay, it's so hard sometimes to see who's, who's going there. But all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Okay, professionals, do y'all have any further questions or comments?
I, I do.
Yes.
I, so in listening to the commentary, I do have a couple of comments. This lot was created by subdivision years and years and years ago. This applicant did not create the subdivision that created this lot. And so therefore, the whole self, self-created hardship is, is not an argument that can be imposed upon this particular applicant. The subdivision happened, it was perfected, this lot was created. The homeowner that's looking to put a house, a single-family house, which is a permitted use in the zone, on this lot did not create any of the circumstances associated with this lot that we're dealing with tonight, nor did they dictate where the sewer was located in town. The only reason that this applicant is here, aside from the area of this lot, which was created by subdivision, is because they're not, they don't have access to sewer. The setbacks, the coverage, all those other things in the underlying zone, with the exception of the lot area, is conforming with all the other, you know, homes in this zone that are tied to sewer. So, the question before you and the reason that they're here is it's an undersized lot in the zone. However, it, our ordinance requires an acre for septic. Or, and that's why they're here. If they were on public sewer, we wouldn't even see them. So, I think while I understand the concerns of the neighbor, however, if this lot was connected to public sewer, the setback would be conforming. The coverage would be conforming, you know, so all these concerns would be conforming and we wouldn't even be talking about them. So you guys should focus on, can the lot accommodate the septic? Which is really the crux of the question before you. And quite honestly, this whole self-created hardship, in my humble opinion, is not even a question because this applicant didn't create the subdivision, didn't create the lot. The lot is a buildable, single-family lot in town. We, as a town, have not provided sewer within the requisite distance that requires them to tie in. Requiring a single-family homeowner to extend a sewer main is exorbitantly expensive and, in my opinion, a little, a little over the line. So, I would focus on the septic. That's kind of why they're here. And if you feel that they can comply with whatever the requirements are associated with the septic, then you should look at it as a single-family house, which is what the actual application is. If they were tied to sewer, then the, then the setback to the neighbor would be compliant.
But Jen?
Yes?
What happens when you feel that maybe not enough due diligence has been applied in determining what the underground wastewater sewer looks like?
It, can they tie into sewer? And by the way, we don't have jurisdiction over the septic system. That's a board of health issue, has nothing to do with us. So if they take the requisite borings and the board of health approves the septic, we don't have the ability to say that they're wrong. It's not our jurisdiction, it's their jurisdiction. It's not our jurisdiction. Septic systems are approved by the board of health, not by the township of Howell.
Another question, Mr. Trop. Should this application move forward? Can there be a caveat that at least they'll explore the potential for hooking up to the, a, a, a sewer main that is maybe within their reach? Over.
You've heard what Jen had said. First of all, I agree with her wholeheartedly regarding, um, council's, um, indication that this is a self-created hardship. I think that is, quite frankly, a stretch and that, as far as I'm concerned, should not be considered. As Jen said, this application is here because it's septic on an undersized lot. Um, I, I, I think to, to think about this as a self-created hardship is, uh, is inappropriate for this applicant. Secondly, Mr. Say, that is the question, I think, that the board has to decide. Um, you know, the board looks with disfavor on mounded systems. I would think the board, and again, this is even before Mr. Mirabelli chimes in, but I think the board either has to be comfortable with moving the application now, um, or perhaps there could be conditions of approval, which is, I think, where you're headed. But to, to require this applicant to, uh, tie into a system which we're not even sure is permitted, um, I don't really think that that would be something that, um, is mandated or should be mandated by the board. So the real question is whether or not is the board, does the board have sufficient facts to do one of two things? To approve this application with a septic system, with an alternative septic system, a non-mounded system? And again, you know, I'm parsing words because the board of health, the county board of health has jurisdiction over that. Or would the board feel more comfortable if the applicant were to adjourn the case now, do the extra research to advise the board that, look, we've looked at every possible way of getting sewer, we simply can't do it. It's cost prohibitive and it's just simply from an engineering standpoint can't be done. I think those are the issues that have to be considered. Um, if the board is satisfied that hooking into a system, even if it were to be possible, i- is inappropriate, well then you should rule on the septic system with conditions accordingly. Well, that's pretty much what I have to say. Mr. Say.
And Mr. Chair, if I could just chime in as well, um, I think there was a current concern regarding stormwater and runoff along the common property line. Uh, obviously, we're going from wooded lot and we're clearing it and it's gonna be grass. Uh, majority, good majority of the stormer runoff is gonna be from the purpose coverage and services on the site. There is no requirement in the zone, so they're, they don't need relief of that. Um, the applicant has already agreed, should the board refer to it as a condition of approval to explore at least the possibility of tying the roof leaders into the, um, into the storm drainage on Sylvan Boulevard. If that's feasibly, feasibly not possible from, um, an elevation standpoint, then provide dry wells with an overflow to the rear of the property that would flow to the, um, the, the water course, uh, to the east and southeast of the property. Um, and what I would also say with the driveway, if there's any concern about any runoff generated from that, it is pitched towards the roadway. Could the applicant add like a railroad tie-ager or a block edger to that to make sure it all goes to the roadway and not to adjacent properties? That might be something else they can provide, but, um, you know, I think those are, um, you know, reasonable agreements that the applicant has offered, uh, to provide that would, you know, hopefully address any concern of the stormwater runoffs.
I'd answer your question, Mr. Say.
I'm getting there. I'm getting closer. Let's put it that way. Uh, I mean, you know, if the applicant chooses to adjourn just to do a little more due diligence, I wouldn't be, you know, against that direction either. Over.
Do you have any further questions or comments?
No.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Could I ask, I have a couple of questions for our professionals.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Jennifer, the, um, the ten by ten patio, is that requiring a variance or is that in code?
It was the way it was originally proposed, but Mr. Lieber, through his testimony, and Mark, you can correct me if I'm wrong, had agreed to shift it so that it would be outside of any required setback, which would not require relief. Correct?
That's correct.
So the patio is no longer a concern.
Okay, and the second thing, Charlie, the, um, the, the, Mr. Lever, Lever said that the, uh, septic thing would be down two feet. Would that bring it down pretty much to grade as one of those?
Ninety-one five would bring it down to eighty-nine five. So, close to the driveway, it would be very close, within six inches of grade. As you head a little bit further east, it would be, uh, slightly raised. I believe the grade at the northeast corner of the property, and Mr. Lieber can correct me, is at eighty-nine one or eighty-eight eight. So you're, you're looking at like six inches or so. Six or six to eight inches on, on that, that eastern corner. Is that accurate, Mr. Lieber?
Yeah, it goes from eighty-eight to eighty-eight seven.
Yeah, so at eighty-nine five, you're only, uh, you know, four to seven tenths of a foot, so six to eight inches plus or minus above existing grade there.
I don't think that that would qualify, in my humble opinion, as being mounded because it could be graded out. It's like, you're talking six inches. You're not gonna be able to notice that. I'm, my concern when we talk about mounded systems is if you look at this big gigantic mound like you see on Route nine. So, that's my concern with that issue. So six inches in my, I mean, I'm not talking about the quality of it, Charlie, I'm just talking aesthetically. From my perspective, six inches doesn't qualify what, if, what I would think of as mounded.
With the runoff, while there is gonna be some water that lands on the grass and could runoff onto the adjacent property, a lot of that runoff is generated from the, the roof, the roof leaders and the driveway. You know, the applicant has, I think, agreed to appropriate means to handle that and try to mitigate any impact to the adjacent property.
Okay, well, Charlie, do you think, or Jen, do you think if we did any kind of small vegetation on between the two properties that would at least maybe take a little concern of the neighbors as far as any, uh, runoff or anything?
I personally think Charlie's suggestion of curbing the driveway would solve the problem. You know, I think landscaping would like aesthetically be an issue, but like as far as runoff, I think Charlie's suggestion of the curbing, in my opinion, would resolve the issue, but I would defer to Charlie.
Yeah, I think what, like I said, with my suggestion with the roof leaders, either into the drainage system that the elevations allow or dry wells overflowing to the rear of the property, ultimately going into that brook. And then obviously, an edger or curbing along the driveway, I think, will handle a lot of that stormwater runoff concerns for the board. Tied directly into the storm conveyance system, you know, the roof leader, all that runoff is gonna directly bypass the property to the east. So that would be the preferred approach, I would think.
Okay, and last question, Mr. Lieber, you did mention too that the applicant would work with the neighbor and whatever he can do as far as keeping some of the trees and, um, that's the only thing I, and also with the patio, if there's a way that they could maybe screen that area uh, to accommodate the, uh, neighbor next to. I know he doesn't really have to now because it's not a, uh, they need a variance, but would that be an issue? And maybe the attorney could answer that.
No, we, we would be happy to coordinate.
That's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cantor?
Um, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of comments, I guess. Is, um, this lot has remained undeveloped for forty years, so I, obviously the neighbor is concerned because he's been looking at a wooded section for forty years. Um, but the fact is that it is a lot that can be developed and, and certainly the, the, um, applicant has presented to us a, a worth, worthwhile plan and, and given the, uh, the, the adjustments that he's been willing to make to both the septic system and to the patio, um, I, in my opinion, I think he's done a, a great job of proving to us the worthwhile, the worth, worthiness of this proposal.
Any further, Mr. Cantor?
No.
Mr. Moretti?
I agree with Mr. Cantor. They, they showed that they really, uh, put a lot of thought into this and did a lot of research. Uh, for them to hold off and bring it back so they could do their due diligence, I don't think other, I don't think that's necessary.
Mr. Gonzalez?
No questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I think I got everybody.
Oh, me?
Yes, sir. Mr. Hughes?
Just to, uh, point of clarity here, uh, Mr. Lieber, in the beginning, when you were doing the, um, the acre setbacks, you were showing in the, in the middle of the house, a little triangle. That would be the conforming setbacks, correct?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I know that the, uh, the neighbor and, and the attorney were talking about trying to comply and, and obviously to comply with that acre uh, zoning would, would obviously not work at all. So I, I just wanted to get that clear in my head, so I thank you.
Okay. Paul, you wanna do a closing summation here or?
Just a ve- very, very short one. I, I think, uh, the board members and your attorney, uh, summarized the benefits of our application very well. I, I absolutely agree that this was not a hardship that was created by my client. It was a har, it was a lot that was uh, subdivided off in nineteen. uh, subdivided off in nineteen seventy-three, uh, and the first zoning ordinances after that made it a uh, uh, still made it a conforming lot. So certainly he never created uh, an, any hardship here. Uh, the notion that my client should somehow uh, connect with a sewer main extension uh, or even through anything that has to do with the neighbor. Number one, a sewer uh, extension would be, would create a heavy, heavy burden and a hardship on my client if he had to do that. It sounds like even if there is a connection next door that, according to your professional and our professional, the uh, size of the, the pipe would probably not accommodate another house. I don't think that's a realistic uh, solution to, to the problem. I think uh, the fact that we've agreed to uh, an alternate sewer uh, system, which would reduce the field by uh, twenty-five percent and and uh, prevent the mounding that I know at the very beginning of the application was a, a big concern of, of uh, uh, the members of the board. I think we've properly uh, addressed that to the to the fact that it, it, at most, it's going to be a, a six inch mound, which he can gra- which will be graded out over the entire uh, length of the uh, property. As far as any of the runoff, certainly uh, we take heed with your professional suggestion that there be some curbing on the driveway to make sure that the water that comes uh, off the house into the driveway goes into the street. And if possible, we could put some uh, a, a dry well uh, in, in the back to make sure that whatever runoff there is would be kept inside the uh, uh, property lines. Uh, I think the concerns of, of the neighbor are really not justified. Uh, I think it was very well put uh, by one of your members that said he's been looking at a vacant lot the whole time he's been living there and he just doesn't like the fact that uh, there's going to be a house next door, which but for the septic would, would be conforming except to uh, except the lot size. So I think we've met our burden with respect to the uh, the variances. I think we have a very uh, a plan that's going to fit in with the neighborhood and the characteristics of the neighborhood. It's not overbuilt, it's not oversized. And for all those reasons, I ask you to approve the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments from the professionals?
None from me.
Charlie?
Yeah, there, Mr. Chair. I'm good.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board in this application? And I want to, I want to make it clear, I, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Tropoli, this applicant isn't seeking a hardship application, correct?
It's not a hardship application, Mr. Chair.
Okay, that's all I wanted to make clear. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would like to uh, put forth a uh, to, to approve this application uh, based upon all the testimony and to uh, to uh, take a look at what Charlie talked about fixing the runoff issues. I know the attorney just mentioned all this, but you know, look at dry wells, try to put it towards the road, whatever works to try to keep the water on the property or towards the uh, the creek or in the back there. Uh, looking at all the trees and trying to preserve some, some trees and some plantings would be wonderful, the curbing on the driveway. And to do uh, some, some pretty serious work on the septic to keep the mound down or no mound at all. I say uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Hughes. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Second by Mr. Cantor. Okay, Eileen, can we have a roll call, please?
You're me, there you go.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Uh, based on the testimony, especially of our planner, that this, we're looking at this as far as the septic tank is the issue here. I believe the applicant has made um, adjustments to that, and I don't think a six inch or what was put on the record is going to be of any detrimental to the neighborhood. And the fact that he is going to be making an effort to preserve some of the trees and accommodate the neighbor as best they can, I will vote yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Sayah?
You know, based on Charlie telling me that there's no issue with stormwater runoff here, I'm going to say yes. But this is on Charlie in this one.
Charlie really looks at the stormwater. Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Based on all the testimony that is placed on the record, I do find it connecting into a sanitary sewer, be it gravity or be it by pump, over three hundred feet is just totally economically non-forth for, for just a single house. Now, if there was ten houses going on that, then we might say, you know, we need to figure out something. I think the applicant met the burden of that, but going through somebody else's property with the septic line without easement, you can't do it. Number two, Charlie brought up a good point. The number one directive with the stormwater runoff should go to the street, tie into existing lateral there that will exit the water from the property. That's number one. If that is not feasible, if it requires, you know, a, a lot of road opening permits, then, you know, the dry wells would be secondary to that. And I, I feel that the applicant has met its burden of proof, not as a hardship case, but as a case of a, a lot that was divided some forty years ago. And at that point in time, it did meet the requirements of the zoning. So my vote is yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, sir. Good luck, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, everyone, and stay safe.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, Eileen, while they're getting out and getting everybody else up, uh, let's take a five real quick.
Okay. The board will take a five-minute recess, be back at nine forty-five.
Be back at nine forty-five, please.
The zoning board will now reconvene.
Think we have, everybody. Okay. Okay, ne- next case on the agenda, case number BA twenty-one, twenty, Diane Yus- Yusoka?
Yusko.
Yusko?
Yusko.
Yusko. Okay, bulk variance. Application of Diane Yusko is applicant owner seeking a bulk variance approval to construct a fourteen, fourteen-foot wide expansion to existing driveway consisting of asphalt and concrete pavement in the northerly side of yard area. The driveway will provide access to larger thirty-foot by thirty-foot, five-foot concrete pad and associated twenty-four by twenty detached garage located in the rear yard. The proposed driveway expansion is within five feet of the northerly side property line, requiring a variance relief. A twenty-foot by fifteen-foot stamped concrete patio is also proposed in the rear yard immediately abrupt abutting to the dwelling located between the driveway and expansion. An existing timber deck on premises known as Block Fifty-seven, Lot Twenty-seven Rustic Drive. Expiration date, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Okay. Okay, Diane, uh, Miss Yutz?
Yusko.
Yusko, got you. Yusko, I won't miss it again.
That's a reminder.
About that. Okay, Mr. Yusko, what brings you here?
Well, we need to swear the witness in first, Mr. Chair. And uh, uh, Ms. Yusko, who's testifying tonight? Just yourself?
Uh, my husband and myself.
Okay, and um, well, let me swear both of you in. Would you raise your right hand, please? Each of you, uh, you swear this testimony you give this evening and be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
I do.
Okay, so ma'am, starting with you, your name, please?
Diane Yusko, Y U S K O.
All right, and sir, your name?
Uh, Steven German, G E R M A N N. Felt like German, but you had another N.
Got us. And that's Steven, right?
Correct, with a P.
P H, thank you.
S E P H, got you. Okay, thank you very much. All right, um, who's going to testify first?
Um, I'm going to let him do all the talking.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, hi. We're looking to put up a twenty-by-twenty-four garage in the back. Um, uh, it's like, it's fourteen and a half feet high. Um, and we're also looking to uh, 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 put a driveway to it on the um, northern side of the house. Okay, but apparently that comes too, too close to the uh, the neighbors. So, and that's why we're here.
Okay, how tall, what, what is the height of the garage?
It's, it's fourteen feet, three inches.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Charlie. Charlie, you there?
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, if I could just uh, ask a couple of clarifying questions. So the survey that was provided in the applicant's hand sketch doesn't show it, but the aerial shows there's a shed in the uh, just make sure I got my bearings right, the northeast corner of the property. Is that still existing or is that gone or?
That shed has been removed. Okay, and yeah, it, it's off the property.
Okay, so I just want to clarify for the board, their comments under item B two are no longer applicable if that's the case with regards to uh, setback variance requirements for those. Uh, so those are no longer uh, required. Um, the applicant, Mr. Um, German, you indicated that the building is, or the garage is fourteen point five feet in height, right?
Correct.
And that's to the P?
It's fourteen feet, three.
Okay.
Charlie?
Yeah.
Hold on one second. They did submit photos. That's so that the shed has been removed and I could put them up.
Perfect.
Okay, are they already marked as exhibits?
Yes, they're A twelve.
Okay.
Right, it sat in the back corner there, which is, it's now gone.
Perfect. Okay, so um, and then the sketch that was provided, you're showing the proposed garage to be fifteen foot from uh, both the north and east uh, lot lines. So the north would be the north side and then the east would be the, the rear. So um, Mr. Chair, if that's the case, the garage itself is conforming with the setback requirements. Uh, we do measure building height, I think, to the average of the, the eaves and the peaks. So it's actually, you know, much uh, you know, probably two and a half, three feet greater than what's required by the ordinance. The garage is conforming. Really, the reason that we're here, it's not for exceeding any impervious coverage because there's no maximum um, uh, threshold for the zone here. It's just the location of the driveway uh, within the five-yard setback requirement from the northerly side lot line. So they're proposing to extend the driveway fourteen feet from the north side of the dwelling um, to be approximately one and a half feet from the northerly side lot line. So that's what they're here seeking variance relief for. Um, the question I have for uh, Mr. German and Ms. Yusko is the drainage course, the natural drainage patterns of the property, um, from, from what I'm looking at on like the county contours, is that the property slopes from south to north? Is that an accurate description?
That is correct.
And then as far as the property east to west, does it, does it break at the house, the front yard drains to the road and the rear drains to the east rear property line? Or, or what's the general drainage course there?
Uh, it all basically drains to the front.
Okay. Uh, so what I would say, Mr. Chair, is the, the biggest concern here really with the driveway is stormwater runoff to the adjacent property. Um, my recommendation, obviously, would be nice if we had an engineered grading plan here. That would be something, if the board rules favorably on this, I think the applicant would be required to provide as a condition of approval um, to the engineering department before they go ahead and actually build this. Um, I think it would be who the applicant uh, and the board to provide a curb or some type of block edger along the north side of the driveway um, to make sure if, you know, as Mr. German testified, the pro- the property slopes to the north, so the driveway is going to slope to the north. And then if it also slopes east to west of the road, that curve should hopefully direct any runoff from the, the, the driveway to the road and not onto the neighboring property. As far as the garage, uh, the twenty-four by twenty-foot garage, um, uh, my recommendation would be that they be required to provide a dry wells for that. Um, you know, the tricky part is we, we typically would like to see overflows uh, directed to the right of way. That becomes a little problematic here. Uh,
Stop you really quick. Um, the garage was submitted under separate application. That has received a permit from my office because the garage is conforming.
The permit included all the concrete work for the driveway.
So really, I think the only thing we're looking at is the driveway.
Just the asphalt driveway?
Yeah, I don't know. Adding anything out to the, to the um, garage at this point is feasible because they already have a permit for it. It's fully conforming.
Okay, how about, so the, the concrete pad around the garage is al- already permitted and built to, Matt? Or what's the status of that?
The proposed concrete in front of the garage?
Yeah.
No, uh, all the concrete work and the driveway work, this was only like a couple of weeks ago. So coming uh, for the variance. So we said we're excluding all of the driveway work. Only the garage is approved uh, so they could go forward and get, and get building permits.
Okay, so what I would say, Mr. Chair, is definitely a curbing along that uh, northerly side lot line of the driveway to direct the water to the right of way would be uh, something that should be required. You know, should the board be really concerned? I don't know that we have any adjourners here or any public comment. If they were really concerned about stormwater, you know, they could certainly, if there was roof leaders at a garage tied into dry wells, but you know, it's really up to the board's discretion on whether or not, or not they want to require that. I think the curbing is going to handle most of the runoff for the, for the driveway. Um, just general, so the, the garage is already permitted, but I mean, can the applicant just give us some idea of like what the use of the driveway is and?
Okay, yeah, we um, first off, we need access to the garage, okay? And if you see in uh, one of the photos there, you'll see the gas meters on the side of the house there, okay? And right there, you need, you need three feet uh, clearance. And we're going to have to um, uh, put in the um, uh, the posts there to protect that according to the gas company. Okay, so therefore, it's going to reduce the amount that we're able to drive back through there. Okay, and that's why we're asking for the uh, the variance to uh, to extend it.
Okay, but I, I guess I'm just generally asking like, you know, it's, you have a attached garage to the, to the.
Oh, 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 I got you. Well, we just got married last month, okay, so.
Congratulations.
We're combining uh, two house, thank you. We're, we're combining two households. Okay, and, and that's, that's the reason.
That's his thing.
Yeah, that's, that's the reason for the garage. Okay.
Are we anticipating it like, you know, like ten, not ten vehicles, but like four or five vehicles parked in the driveway? Is vehicles being parked in the garage? It's just for access?
Yeah, we, yeah, we have, we have our two vehicles already. That's good enough. Thank you.
Okay, and then as far as uh, utilities to the property, so I think you guys are on public sewer and water, correct?
Public city, it's sewer and pu- public water. Uh, um, the electric and cable are overhead.
Okay, so, and then the, the services, they're not in the vicinity of this pro- proposed driveway expansion, right?
No, they are not. No, the, the uh, the existing gas line comes up the center of the driveway.
Okay.
And then, yeah, comes to the front of the house and then, and bends slightly. So that's not even going to be an issue.
Okay, so yeah, so the new driveway is not going on any existing utilities.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, really, you know, the garage has already been approved and it's conforming. Uh, the curbing along the north side of the driveway, I think, and, and getting an approved grading plan to the engineering department, I think, will go along with stormwater runoff. Um, other than that, I have no issues with the uh, with the application. Um.
Okay, if you take a look at the existing driveway as well, you can take, you can see there's um, uh, paving stones, okay, that, that create uh, a type of um, uh, a leader. Okay, yeah, okay. We plan, we plan to match that up to the back and, and then um, uh, in the back of the house, uh, there's a, there's, we're going to have landscaping where there's no, water's not going to get into it. There's maybe four by fours or landscaping block to, to tear the water down into the driveway down into the road.
But, Mr. Chair, what I would say is uh, you know, in lieu of like a curbing, a railroad tie with a lip on it, you know what I mean, some amount of lip that's going to be able to keep the water channelized running to the. running to the road and not just freely flowing off the edge of the driveway would.
At least a two inch.
Those are angles. Those are angled in, the paving.
Yeah.
With this picture, but there is an angle and the water does run down it.
Yeah, so what I would say, Mr. Chair, is I would like to see some kind of lip on it just to to make sure it at least gets to the front yard and towards the roadway. The existing that you have, you know, up to where it widens, I think you can keep it as is. But for for the extension, I'd like to see some kind of reveal on it. We're not talking about a full six inch curb, but you know, a railroad tie with a lip or a block edger with a lip, I think, is is what we.
That's what, we're planning that as well, you know, because, you know, our neighbors, Robin and Jose, they've been there forever. And, yeah, that was their only concern, and we've already addressed it with them. Okay, we definitely going to propose to put in a substantial curbing, okay? But it's got to look nice as well.
Today, yeah, you, I would say even a minimum of a two inch lip because.
Yeah, we were going to go higher than that.
Okay, that, I'm looking at the dimensions here. That's a lot of water during a rain, especially a heavy rain. That's a lot of water that's going to be coming down that driveway because that's a lot of impervious surface. So, you know.
Honestly, Mr. Chair, if they want to use that same type of block and just do it vertical, I think that would be, you know, preferred in lieu of like an actual concrete board curb, as long as there's strike joints, you know, in between the the block itself, I think that would be acceptable.
We can do that.
That acceptable, sir?
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, and as far as the runoff, you know, coming from from the garage, that's really not a very big footprint, but but there is going to be, you know, some runoff. I would like to see the grade, just like Charlie has said, have a grading plan done for this and submit to the board so we can just make sure that if there is a complaint down the road, you know, we have a grading plan to fall back to and just make sure it's to compliance.
Sounds good.
But anyway. Jennifer?
I have zero issues with this application.
Okay. Okay, that was quick. Okay, Mr. Hughes? Any questions?
No, sir, I think I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Mr. Martins?
I'm good too, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cantor?
No, sir, no questions.
Mr. Gonzalez?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moretti?
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Saya?
I'm good, sir.
Okay. Well, do you have any further testimony you want to put on the record?
No, I think we're okay. We can get that grading plan for you.
Okay, and then curved, curved at one edge. Okay, at this time, I'm going to take a motion to open to public.
I'll make that motion to open to public, Mr. Chair.
Okay, motion by Mr. Hughes. Seconded by Mr. Moretti. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, at this time, we'll open to public for questions and comments at this time. We'll take both.
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up for questions and comments for members of the public. Unfortunately, there is no one else on the meeting but whoever you see on the screen. So I don't believe there are any members to the public.
Yeah, I don't think that's unfortunate. I think that's very good. But, okay, can I have a motion to close public?
Make the motion to close to the public.
Motion by Mr. Moretti.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Do you want to make a closing comment there?
Who else?
Yeah, you want to make a closing comment?
Are we approved?
Not yet.
Yeah, we just, we'll get that that plan to you.
Okay.
All right, that's not a problem.
Okay, well, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve this application. I think they are doing a nice thing with the driveway, and I think it's very feasible. And the most important thing is I don't think there's any problems with the neighbor. And as long as they provide the grading plan and take care of the curbing, I'm all good for it.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Martins. Do I have a second?
I'll say, yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Moretti.
Mr. Moretti. Okay. Okay, Eileen?
Mr. Hughes?
I'm sorry?
Roll call, Mr. Hughes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, I say yes, and I appreciate the applicant's talking with the neighbor. That that went a long way in my mind and to try to mitigate any issues, and I say yes.
Mr. Martins?
And congratulations on your marriage.
I guess.
Don't be wedding.
Is that a yes, Mr. Martins?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. I didn't hear that. I'm sorry. Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Saya?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Congratulations to the newlyweds? Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yeah, Mr. Saya.
I got Mr. Saya.
Okay, yeah, based on the testimony placed on the record as far as the driveway and the grading plan, or not the driveway, but the curbing on the driveway and the grading plan, you know, congratulations. My vote is yes, also.
And your motion carries.
Good luck. Good luck and.
Good luck.
Good luck with both, the marriage and the.
Yes.
Drive line?
Yep, you're done.
Thank you. So I could have helped you out a bit, a little bit on that last one. I'm the plumbing subcode official for the township of Manalapan. So you had a lot of, you had a lot of plumbing issues on that last one. I was sitting there hollering out the answers. Thank you, everybody.
Yes, sir. Okay. Do we have any further business with the board?
I have nothing.
We have a meeting next week, correct?
We have a meeting next week and the week after.
We meet every week. Don't you know that?
Two more, and then you get a couple weeks off.
Every week.
People are going to start talking about all of us.
I know.
We don't meet the 28th, right?
No, no meeting.
We might. You never know.
No, I didn't advertise for that one.
Bite your tongue, Jen.
Not yet. There's still time.
Okay, at this time, I would love to have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moretti. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, guys.
Take care.
Good night, guys. Y'all have a safe one. See y'all next week. Good job.
Good night, Hugh.
Thank you.
Good job.